Okay.
We're ready.
Well, it's here.
All right, it's Tuesday, May 2nd, and about 7:10, I'd like to open the business meeting for the Georgetown Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to rules laid out in Chapter 40A of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules that are rules of procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded for the purposes of taking minutes. First item of business is monthly finance. Patty, you want to take it away?
The first sheet is the newness printout from the town accountant. This shows the, for the expense account, the phone bills. For phone bill supply postage, we haven't used, we haven't needed to use any postage. What you have is the 21566 balance, and then you have my spreadsheet underneath it. So, we're going to use the rest of that for the phone bill. Because the phone bills with the new system, we're paying two phone bills, we're paying Verizon, long distance, and Windstream, it's called, is the new phone system. So, it, it, it's kind of high, but this February bill we just got, it's coming down a little bit. I mean, you can look at December, and October, November, December. So, but, anything else we purchase will have to come out of the revolving account, and next year, this is probably going to be taken out of the budget. So, we might only end up with a couple hundred dollars in the expense account.
The, the, you're talking about the expense line, the expense account line.
They're going to take whatever we spend out of the expense account, and so we're not paying it ourselves. That's the way I understand it, right now.
All right.
And right now, that much should be supposed to be later, so we've got plenty in there.
That's a credit, right?
Yep. Revolving account, amount spent to date, one thousand seven fifty, one fifty, application and fees, one thousand nine fifty.
Perfect.
A little bit.
Finally tuned machine.
Ninety-one, ninety-one, seventy-five revolving hours. And I attached your minutes on March 7th, and the only one that wasn't here was Sean.
Still not here.
Yeah, he unexpectedly had a trip. So, I just need a motion for those minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of, where's the date again? Uh, March 7th, thank you, March 7th.
Twenty seventeen.
Yeah, two thousand seventeen.
Your second.
Oh, second, second.
Thank you, Sharon. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Animus?
And there was no hearing?
No, that was just business.
Okay.
Conflict of interest, email from, actually, Mike had sent this out when I was out with my surgery in January, so I knew it was coming up, so this is from Janet, Ms. Loughman's office. Dave F. Sherrons, Dave Twiss sent me his, even though he didn't have to do it.
Oh, then we didn't have to do it?
He didn't have to do it, it was every two years, and he did it in sixteen, but he sent me a new one, so now he's good till, till nineteen. So, did you guys all, do you have your certificates?
Uh, no, not yet, I'm working on.
Okay, so I got to get those to the.
Or tardy certificate, so maybe not, I don't want to see.
So, just, just email them to me.
Are we acknowledging receipt of this?
Maybe we could do that together, you guys.
You have these emails?
Just get together.
In your email, there's.
There's a last page that says acknowledgement of receipt, do you need that?
No. No, that's not before, just that, I need to get five.
So, you need a copy of the, the last page, right?
Yeah, when you, when you get to the end, just make sure, as soon as that certificate pops up, hit print. Make sure you turn off the, in your email, there's an instruction.
Okay.
The first attachment says notice to municipal employees, it's a Word document. Print that out and have it next to you, because you've got to turn off your pop-ups, or your name won't print out. You have, you can't use Google Chrome. You have to, there's a bunch of things you have to do before you start it.
Okay.
So, just print that out and have it next to you. And the link is right in the email. And then I did, I just did a list here of, the last time you guys completed it was all, all of even two thousand fifteen, except for Dave Twiss.
Oh, this is what you're.
So, it's every two years.
You're way ahead of me.
Just attaches the conflict of interest summary. And next item is the denial letter from our building inspector, Mr. Golden, for the hearing tonight. Which you guys had in your email previously. This is a KP update from town council. So, this Mike had emailed me too, again, when I was out with the surgery. And I was reading it, and I went on the DHTD website, and the part where it, I know Sean was going to have some wording he wanted to do for the special, lapse of special permit wording, but the part where it's, it's two years, is now three years, if you look on the bottom of the first page. That last paragraph, so you know, when we do the lapse of special permits, and it always says two years, so it's three years. And I went on DHC's, DHTD website, and if you go to the email from Elaine Bagna from DHTD, I pulled up, because I was looking for a new copy, if there were, you know, these changes were incorporated for you to, because they used to send out new copies of forty-eight every time they caught one. They don't do that anymore.
Les Disarps, do you know if our bylaw?
Doing business meeting?
What?
It's Dave.
Oh. Do you know if our bylaw specifically says that the zoning ordinance or bylaw shall provide that a special permit granted, so on and so forth, not more than three years?
I think it says two, I'm not sure about that.
The bylaw says, I don't, I mean, I could, it's in here somewhere, but it's all right, we'll find it.
Bylaw, no, it is, it's one, it's one sixty-five seventy-five.
Thank you.
And it says two years.
Right, so we need to update the bylaw for that, right?
I think all towns and cities are going to have to do that.
So, is this retroactive immediately, or is it until we update the bylaw?
I think it's in effect immediately, right?
Yeah, oh, no, this is, this is now.
Because that might come up, you know, if there's anything out there that hasn't commenced yet.
Even tonight's hearing would do it affect that, right?
I, I would think so, just something to, so, do we have to do anything on our side to pursue getting, making that change, or would that go through planning?
Planning, I talked to, I talked to John, and, so he has a running list going.
Okay, okay.
And this is gonna, we'll, we'll do a, a letter, or an email, or whatever.
Okay, good.
And just let him know. So, I, I went on the state website, if you go to Elaine's, so she can't send us out forty-eights anymore, we can go and print off a copy, but when you print it out, it doesn't let you print a double-sided copy. So, I went to that lapse of special permit page, if you look at the next page, under add the update.
Yeah.
And you go to the last page, where I pulled out the, I just looked in my bylaw, and then I went on their website, and then it says two years in the left column, underneath that, Paul, underneath that. So, is he on the bottom?
Yep.
So, it says two years in the left column, and three years in the paragraph on DHTD website. So, I called them up, and let them know, and they changed it, and they sent me a new one. So, if you want to stick this page in your, I made copies, if you want to use that one on.
Oh, it's the summary side, so the correct one is three, right?
Yeah, so if you want to use that other copy I highlighted, too. Because I wrote on, I wrote on that one.
This is better, because it's got the highlighting here, so.
This says two.
No, on the next page. I'll give you that one.
They're awesome.
All right, and that's the one.
I got a, yeah.
I'll send you one.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
Or you can use that one.
The one that's highlighted is great.
That I highlighted is better?
Yeah, fine.
I think that doesn't bother.
Oh, yeah, this is.
It looks like this went into effect in August of sixteen.
Yeah.
But they're just sending this to us now.
Well, Mike had emailed it, is it December? No, it was later. But I didn't see it until I got back.
Okay.
So, and.
So, it is retroactive to when it went into effect.
Let me just write down D H C.
Do you remember if there's any that might have affected? I don't know.
Okay.
All right, thanks Patty, that's good to know.
The only other thing, so I put Sean's item off until the next business meeting. As far as old business, new applications, I, the deadline is May, I have to have a legal in by a week from Wednesday, so there's still, someone can still file, there's stuff floating out there, Les is good, he's getting, getting meeting with some people that.
Yeah, if they come and go, I've had some inquiries, and I haven't heard from them, then I've had other inquiries, and I haven't heard from them. I don't know who's in line. So, that's a possibility, isn't it?
But no applications, yeah.
They need plot plans and stuff, so they're out here.
What about after forty-B?
Haven't heard a word.
I'm just waiting for it to pop up.
No, I haven't heard anything, since the meeting we had with the attorney, and town council, Les, town planner, haven't heard a word, that was a couple months ago?
Well, they went to planning board, and planning board requested a lot more information, like engineering plans, there's a lot more information that had to be provided. So, I don't know if they're back on the engineering.
They went back? Did they go back again?
No, no, they were gone before that, I think.
Yeah, but before they came back, they come back to us, they need more information on the plans.
Right, 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 okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, they were, they were like eighty percent plans.
Yeah.
And, um.
Yeah, so the planning board review kind of dictated.
Planning also, if they found a ZVA, we must come and plan, so we need a complete plan so they can respond.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything after that, when, you know, all those plans had to be changed. You remember that four-page memo, memo letter from Larry Graham you guys saw?
Yep.
So, I'm assuming he was working on that.
Okay, is there any other old business, Patty?
That's it.
Okay.
Want to close?
Anything else anybody needs to bring up? All right, a motion to close the business meeting for May 2nd.
So moved.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
All those none? Business meeting is closed.
Do you want me to tell?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take a recess until seven thirty?
Seven thirty, yeah.
And give the, I don't know why we always tell them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the three years, the three years, you know, nothing about.
Sure, we do it all the time.
Just special permit.
Yes.
Do you guys want to move more room?
No.
Oh, I know he's here, I feel bad.
I just moved Dave. That's good. How you been?
Really?
Did you? One handful?
I just danced it.
It's a, they're trying to sell it, so they give you a generic one.
Okay, you're on.
All right, it's about seven thirty-three on Tuesday, May 2nd, and I'd like to open the hearing for Levin Long Hill Road. First, let me introduce the members of the board. This is Sharon Freeman, Dave Twiss, Gina Tebow, Paul Schillen, and I'm the chairman, Jeff Moore. And all five of us will be voting tonight, if we come to that. So we are missing a couple of members, but we have a full board tonight, so it should be, should be all set. Gina, do you want to read the legal notice for us?
Sure. A public hearing will be held on May 2nd, 2017 at seven thirty PM at the Georgetown Town Hall, third floor, meeting room, for a petition application filed by the Town of Georgetown Water Department General Manager Louis Mamallet. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
One Molton Street, Georgetown, Mass., zero one eight three three, for an elevated water tank which requires finding, special permit, or variance. The pre-existing non-conforming lot lacks dimensionable, dimensional requirements for a lot area of sixty thousand four hundred and fifty square feet, where eighty thousand square feet is required, frontage of one hundred and ten point three nine feet, where two hundred feet is required, and a lot width of fifty feet, where a hundred and fifty feet is required pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section six, nine, and ten, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Sections eight dot three, eight dash eleven, seventy-four through seventy-nine, eighty-four, and ninety-four. The premises affected is eleven Long Hill Road in the IB District, Assessors Map fifteen, Lot forty-nine A.
Awesome, thank you. So, welcome. You guys maybe want to introduce yourselves and just let us know what's going on with your project.
I want to start from your side, this way.
Sure.
Either way.
Sounds good. My name's Jeff McClure. I am a member of the Board of Water Commissioners.
My name's Lou Mamallet. I'm the General Manager for the Georgetown Water Department.
My name is Deirdre Lawrence. I'm an attorney representing the Georgetown Water Department tonight.
Good, great. So do you guys have a presentation you want to start with and just give us a summary of why you're here, basically? Start with that, and then we can go from there.
Sure. So, the Water Department is proposing to construct a new water tank on its site off Long Hill Road. The reasons for the zoning relief are that the lot does not comply with minimum frontage, lot width, and lot size requirements, as was previously read for the record. This site was, by way of background, purchased pursuant to a town meeting wrote in nineteen seventy-seven specifically for use by the Water Department for construction of a future water tank. It's been under the custody and control of the Water Department since that time, and it has continuously been used for Water Department purposes. In nineteen seventy-nine, the lot involved in this particular application was created pursuant to an approval-not-required subdivision plan. So, bringing up to date, most recently, on March twenty-eighth, the Water Department applied or received a denial for building permit application from the Building Inspector on the basis of non-conformity with dimensional requirements for the, for the site. The use of the site for the water tank is permitted as of right as a municipal use under the zoning bylaw, and that finding was specifically made by the Building Inspector. The Building Inspector's denial mentioned three potential avenues of relief from the dimensional shortcomings of this site. We've addressed those in a letter that was filed. It's a narrative that accompanied the application.
March twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen.
And we think that the Water Department can meet the standards for either a special permit or in the alternative for a variance. I don't know if you've had a chance to read through that letter, or if you'd like me to summarize the contents of that letter and go through how we believe the Water Department meets the application of the various criteria for a special permit or for a variance, or if you'd rather just ask questions, but initially, if it's all right with you, we'd like to have Mr. Mamallet go through a description of the specific project that's going to be built and answer any questions regarding the plans that you might have.
That sounds great.
Turn it over to Lou.
We'll hear about the project, and then we'll go from there.
Great.
Okay. So, as Deirdre said, the land was purchased back in nineteen seventy-seven expressly for the purpose of constructing a water tank some, at some point in the future. I'm not sure anybody really envisioned how far into the future, but today is the future, or hopefully very soon. So, we engaged the services of an engineering firm to help us work through the process of determining measures that we could take to make improvements to the system, especially in light of the fact that we have an existing water storage tank which was also built in nineteen seventy-seven, excuse me, in nineteen sixty, that right now is, is, has needed some temporary repairs to make it sort of structurally sound for a bit more time while we can get this process in order to design and build a new tank.
That's the one on Ballpate?
That's the, that tank is on Ballpate. I misspoke when I said seventy-seven because another tank was built next to it in nineteen seventy-seven, concurrent with the purchase of this tank, I mean, of this, of this tank site. So, in general...
And that tank is at Ballpate?
Yes, yes. So, so in general, what's, what's, what came out of this was the evaluation of the condition of that tank and a decision on, on whether or not to replace the tank there or to construct a new tank in, in the new location, most notably the, a tank site that the town and the Water Department already owned and understood to have the ability to do so. So I, I think that's sort of where we are right now. We have a tank that is in need of repairs, and we believe is, doesn't have much longer to go before it's, before it could have some failure. And a proposal here now with a design to construct a tank where we believe there's some benefit, significant benefit, to constructing it on this new site. And again, I think that was envisioned a long time ago, but we now have sort of the engineering basis to acknowledge that, that in fact this site is, is an optimal site. Not to mention the fact that so much of the town's development over the years in that period of time has extended away from where the heart of the original system was. If you, you know, if you think about the town, all the wells, the treatment plant, and all the storage for the system is all really on the western side of the town, and the town has sort of grown east and north, and northeast and south, and in every other direction away from where the facilities are now. So part of what this does is, is creates more of a balance to the system. So I think in general, that's, that's the nature of the project and the rationale behind it. I think Jeff could speak to sort of the forward thinking of, you know, of, of the board and, and their approach. If you have other questions on that.
Sure, yeah, go for it.
Yeah, so the, the existing tank that we're trying to replace with this is near, it's at its end of its useful life right now, unfortunately. So we did a couple of Band-Aids to it, and it'll probably be good for about, I don't know, another couple of years. So while we're getting the most that we possibly can out of that tank, we've been actively designing and moving forward with the, the build of the new tank, so that way we can basically just swap the one for the other and still have adequate infrastructure to support the town.
Do you want to discuss the actual structure that's going up at all?
I, I can. I mean, I, we can, we can flip a few of the sheets and just kind of give you a general sense of where it is and what it looks like and...
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that? We have a couple of things to get to, but I think it makes sense to understand a little bit more about the actual project itself and what it entails, and then we'll...
So this first, the first page is obviously a cover sheet, so just to kind of give you a perspective, the, kind of the eastern edge of the town, there's the I-95 corridor. Tenny Street crosses over Route ninety-five, and then Long Hill comes off of Tenny Street and moves up into that Highland, Highland area. It's basically the same neighborhood that currently has the two large cellular towers in it already.
And the treatment facility, Lou, could you point that out on the, is...
The, the town's wells and, and treatment plant, or two of the town's, three wells and the treatment plant are basically right off of West Street. For the general public's understanding, it's next to the West Street soccer fields, if you will. There's a third well that exists off of Lower Bailey Lane, off of Route ninety-seven, and that, that line comes cross-country and ties into the, a common line where all three of the, of the sources going through a single treatment plant, and then it gets pumped out into the rest of the town and into the system. The existing storage tanks for the town, the original one is the tank that people see when they're coming in from Boxford. It overhangs the golf course. It says Georgetown on it. That was built in nineteen thirty-four. That's part of the original system of the town. And then there's two concrete storage tanks that were built behind Ballpate Hospital. One was built in nineteen sixty. That's the tank that we, where Rick have a lot of concerns about now, and the other one next to it is built in nineteen seventy-seven. So the capacity is from the new tank, basically is replacing what we'd be losing in the old tank.
Question. You, you said that other tank is nineteen thirty?
Nineteen thirty-four.
And that is still working?
That, that tank's been out of service. We had a sort of a short-circuiting problem with the existing tank. I mean, it still could be insert, it still could be used in an emergency, but right now it's been offline since two thousand and thirteen. And again, hydraulically, everything existed in one part of the town, and there was, the problem sort of further exacerbated because that tank is, was used to control the levels. I mean, the level in that tank controls the, the pumps turning on and off. So what was happening is, is the, the movement of water in that tank would go up and down by, say, four feet. Unfortunately, the movement in the, in the two tanks up on Ballpate Hill behind the hospital would go up and down by like eight inches. So what was happening is there was a lot of water left in the tank that was, you know, sort of aging out, if you will, and, and old age water or, water with longer water age tends to create water quality problems. And obviously, a big part of our, our challenge is to continue to make the water quality better. So taking that tank offline was kind of a...
So what's in that tank now? Is it water in it?
It's empty.
And is that not a good spot for the tank, or...
Again, hydraulically, it represent, it...
In other words, if you demoed that tank?
The, hydraulically, the system right now has all its storage in one general area. You know, if you think of the whole town, everything is located right here.
Right.
All the wells, the treatment.
Across town.
Right.
Is problematic.
Right, and, and I think, I mean, it's not to say that it doesn't, it hasn't worked, but we've, we have a demonstrated model that shows that this will work better and provide more benefits. And so...
It's actually probably a good opportunity to make sure people understand that when that tank came out, the water quality across town got better.
Oh, yeah.
And that's probably something that we don't say enough to everybody.
It came out when, when it came offline.
When it came offline, the water quality got better.
In the whole system.
And over the last two, two and a half years, the water quality in general across town has gotten a lot better. And that's something I don't think we've done a good enough job of letting people know that.
There's X in the water or Y in the water, because you guys send out, you mandated to send out the reports saying there's something in the water.
Yeah.
You're saying that sort of went away when you took that older one offline?
The, the water quality, I don't want, I don't want to misrepresent this. The water quality in Georgetown has had some challenges. I don't know that they are a hundred percent based upon where these tanks have been located, but incrementally, we've seen improvements be made as we've taken incremental steps. The, the board kind of oversaw the development of a, of a, of a larger plan, and that larger plan was broken into short-term, medium-term, and long-term recommendations. And as you might imagine, the short-term things were things we could implement relatively easy.
And cheaply.
And cheaply. The medium-term ones had bigger price tags, and the, and the most dramatic and biggest price tag, and the thing we think we're getting the most bang for our buck in the medium term is the construction of this tank. And the hope is, is to forego the long-term things until we can get a sense for how, you know, sort of how much more we need to go. It would be easier to just spend ten or fifteen million dollars on something and say, great, the problem's solved. But I think the board's approach and the Water Department's general philosophy is, is do things cost-effectively and measured and, and, and monitor what the results have been. And I think to Jeff's point, and I appreciate him saying that because that's kind of a reflection of what we do day-to-day, is we make these changes and we monitor the water quality town-wide at like twenty or twenty-five different locations. So we've actually been able to see the water quality get better with each of the steps that we've taken. And so we, we know that, that it's gotten better. As Jeff pointed out, we need to do more of that messaging to tell people that. But, but folks have come in and told us that as well. So I think that's something that we take to heart that, you know, you know, that, that, that people have recognized that.
So will there still be, if, if you were to build this new tank on Long Hill?
Yes.
Would there still be a tank on Ballpate? I, I didn't understand that. So then you would have water totally takes in two parts of town.
It would be more balanced.
And I don't know anything about treatment, but the distance between that and, yeah, is that...
Yeah, so the water tank, that's on Long Hill. Where is that water going to be treated?
Or will it go there?
All the water, all the water starts in sources that are on the, on, on one side of the town. They're all in sort of the Parker River Aquifer.
Sure.
So all the water comes from the, the western side of town. It all gets tied together and treated in the treatment plant building, which is right next to the soccer fields.
Which is in the west side of town.
Yeah. And then all the water gets pumped out into the distribution system.
Oh, and then it gets stored.
So treated water gets sent everywhere.
Okay, I got it.
The challenge for us has been to make the benefits of the treatment last and linger far enough out into the system so that those positive benefits continue to make it further and further out. When I first started, we had some areas that had some substantial challenges, and so those were kind of our focus areas. We knew where the water was bad. We didn't necessarily know where the water was good, and so we started doing this baseline analysis to make sure that we were focused and we knew where, where we were going with this. And everything we've sort of been doing over the, over this period of time has been geared towards that. And, and obviously, we've, we've got some demonstrated results, I think.
So, forgive my ignorance, but the water tanks here?
Yep.
And this is just storage?
Correct.
Right? So then, as needed, it goes down?
Yep.
Into the pipe to the treatment plant?
No. So think of the, the wells of the raw water.
Goes to your house?
Yeah.
So when it goes down, it's going to your house?
It's already treated.
Already treated?
Yeah. The wells of the raw water, the treatment plant treats it and puts it into the system as treated.
Okay.
When the, think of the water tanks as sort of the reverse of a sump pump. And so, when people are using water faster than we make it, the excess water from the treatment plant that's, I mean, from the tanks that's stored makes up the difference at, at night or in those off-peak periods when people are using water less. If the, if the tanks are still low enough, the, the tanks are telling the pumps to continue to run and the treatment plant to continue to treat so we can make up the difference. And that's the, and that's really the process. And, and, and that won't, none of that will change.
Yeah.
It's just sort of the, the layout of the, of where the tanks are located, the kind of the even distribution of the hydraulics of the system. And we also believe that we're, we will be pushing more newer water to the farther, to the opposite side of town, and, and we think there'll, there'll be some more benefits there in terms of water quality as well.
And the remaining tank up on it, remind me how old that will be?
It was constructed in nineteen seventy-seven, the one that will remove.
That one's going to have to get replaced soon. I've realized it's not this project, but...
I would say that that one's in much better shape.
We'd hope to have another fifty years out of it.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I think too is somewhere between nineteen sixty and nineteen seventy-seven, I think changed the...
They switched from granite to concrete.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Just more of a tank guy than I am.
So it's got...
They last longer now.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, it's also concrete, and the one that you see next to the golf course is steel. So it's different materials.
Sure, got it. Okay.
Yeah.
And the steel tank that, that was built in nineteen thirty-four, and I think it's got leg coating on it, and, you know, it's, it's just, it's an older style tank, an older material. It was built, you know, a hell of a tank, don't get me wrong.
So that's, that's the general overview.
Yeah.
Let's move into the actual tank.
Sure. So here's the site. Again, it's off of Long Hill Road.
Does everyone know where the site is? Have you guys gone up there? Okay.
Okay.
Paul, you've seen it?
I didn't want to say anything. I know where Long Hill is, so I'm assuming it's at the top of the hill.
And then you go...
There's an access road.
Know the area very well up there, so I'm pretty sure I know where it is, yeah.
There's an access road that leads in, off of Long Hill that looks like it would have gone to our site, but that, that road is actually owned by the people that own the cell towers.
Yeah. It's pretty close to the, I think people know where the towers are because they can see them, so...
Yeah, yeah. One of the, one of the cell towers is basically, yeah, I think it's right here.
Yeah.
The one, the one key thing about the cell towers that, that we want to make sure is clear is, the cell towers are like, I think the, one of them is a hundred and ninety-three feet tall, and I think the one next to it is a slightly, slightly shorter than that, like one eighty-five or something like that. And the tank that we're proposing right now, I think the tallest part of the tank, I think, is a hundred and twenty feet. So this thing sort of sits in the, underneath, if you will.
Are they shorter than the lights at the... Sorry. And you, I think I read in there that most of the trees are taller than the proposed tank as well?
I, I think that's more, it's sort of a sightline thing. I think, I think there will be trees that won't be as tall.
Oh, I'm sure there will be, but...
However, from a sightline perspective and the way it sits in the lot and the way the, the way the neighborhood sits, and sort of the, the kind of the viewing angle.
You want to talk to it?
Yeah, I, yeah. I mean, I think in many instances, you won't see any of it. You know, I've spent a significant amount of time up there. And I, I honestly, trying to visualize it, what you really see is these big cell towers that stick up, you know, sixty or seventy feet higher or eighty feet higher than what we're proposing. And so when you're trying to get a visual, what you're looking at, you're trying to figure out, you know, will they quite be able to see the railing on the roof? And then you're looking next to something that's sixty feet tall or seventy feet taller than, next to it. So it's kind of hard to really get a, you know, kind of zoom in on just kind of that look.
While, while we're on that, sorry.
I think the sprint tower was the, when they came to us, that was two thousand and one. It's a two-hundred-foot monopole.
So while we're on that issue though, and we're sort of talking hydrology and the, the system and how it all works, explain briefly what sets the height of that tower from a, from a pressure standpoint, a head standpoint. The town, it needs to be a certain feet. And then this site lends itself well, and I'm assuming if this were some other location, that thing would have to be a lot taller in order to achieve the same thing. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. The, the pressure that you get at your faucet in town comes from the, essentially, the, the water level elevation that's in the Ballpate tanks. So as you put multiple tanks in a system, they all have to have the exact same, what's called an overflow elevation, or your water level's going to be the same in all of them. So we have to match that same elevation. So as you can imagine, the ground in town does this. So at Ballpate, the ground is here, and along Hill, it's here. So that's the size, that's what dictates what the size of your tank is. And meeting that is important, or one would always constantly be draining and overflowing the other one, so they have to be equal.
So if this were, and this site is, is it the highest point over there?
I think, I think this is the second highest point in town.
In that, in that end of town. The, the highest on that end of town, and because it's higher, that means the tank can be shorter.
Right.
Whereas if we, you know, did one, you know, somewhere else, it would be a much taller tank to meet that high elevation.
The water elevation would have to be the same.
If you did this, if you did this tank twenty feet lower in elevation down the hill, the tank would be twenty feet tall.
That's correct.
On Ballpate, I think those concrete tanks are essentially sitting on the ground. Is that, I mean, the, the tower is there, but those other tanks you don't even see.
So, so those tanks are like twenty-five feet tall, and this is a hundred and twenty, so the difference there is ninety-five feet, and that's roughly the difference in elevation of the ground level at the top of those two hills.
That's right.
So as Jeff pointed out, it's kind of, you'd be basically, you're trying to draw a straight line, and then you're looking for the next biggest hill so you can make the next, the shortest object you can make. And I think clearly, the thought was, yes, this is a high point, and it's on the other side of town, and the town's growing in that direction. So kind of all points led to the selection of this as a site.
Back in nineteen seventy-seven.
Yeah, 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 right.
The methodology hasn't changed. Water flows downhill.
That's right.
Good old rabbit.
All right.
So that's the, that's the site itself.
Sorry, Lou, I don't mean to keep sidetracking you, but we could get...
No, 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 no. I want you to be engaged because we, we prepared and we have answers, and we, and we want this to be, you know, everything to be understood. So, this kind of blows up into, to where the tank, where the tank actually is located. So actually, the sheet C three and C two is kind of in reverse. C three is the access to get up to the piece where on C two, the tank will be located. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. And so the, what happens with the tank site is, is you send out a survey to make sure you know where your, you know, where your property is, and you send out a contractor to do some borings to, to make sure you understand what's going to be underneath this rather heavy object to make sure the site will, will bear that load. And so that's been done. The tank was situated, in this particular case, was also situated to, to ensure that you could meet sort of the setback distances. And I think in the application, it talks about what the required is, and then we've called out on the drawings what the, what the amount, you know, what the, the actual is versus what the required is, and in every case, it exceeds. What also shown here is a, a row of arbivites. That's a detail of what it is. On sheet D two, it shows what we're proposing for plantings. And basically, what we just did was call out a row of them to act sort of as a screening. This is basically the closest lot to the, the closest house to the tank site. I think the, the house is generally located here. This is basically the closest lot to the, um, the, the closest house to the tank site. I think the, the house is generally located here. So the screening is basically designed to be right in the visual path from the backyard towards the base of the tank. Um, just to give you a perspective too, is that, this is what the tank looks like. So the base of the tank is, is forty feet in diameter and the top of the tank is roughly sixty-four feet in diameter. So that's what it looks like. And then it's got an overhead door and a manway, a regular entry door, but those are located on the opposite side. So for lighting, when somebody comes out, the only lights that will go on is a light on this side, on the opposite side of the tank from view, so. Essentially, there's never gonna be any light, sort of lighting or light issues or any, or any nuisance that way. It's about as passive as you can get, I think.
And the color will be?
Sorry?
Color?
Uh, the, the base of this is, is concrete, so it's like a, like a.
Gray.
Concrete grayish color. Um, I think that, I don't think we picked a color for the top, but it tend to be white or sky blue.
The one I like, Delph blue.
Delph, what is it?
Delph blue.
Delph. I assume Delph means you can barely see it.
But Lou, this is gonna, i- if it moves forward, it would go before the planning board, so they're going to have probably their own ideas about screening and colors and whatnot too.
But I, but I think in general, we've, we've sort of proactively shown that we're willing to do what's necessary. Again, the planning board will pull us to that if it feels that it needs to be more intensive. Do they have any questions regarding what the tank looks like or the overall size of a tank or?
Did I hear you say this is a twelve million dollar project?
Oh, I thought you said something like that before.
One point two.
That's the long-term project that they're hoping not to do.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, exactly. There's just one place in the run. There's just one point in the run.
Um, I think the rest of the, the sheets are just sort of detailed drawings of things which I'm not construction related.
I'm interested to hear from our guest.
Yeah, uh, before we get to that, I'm sure we'll have some other questions as well. Is there, is there any correspondence, Patty?
Nope.
I didn't see any here, so.
If you could read, someone can read the exhibits in to the record.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Paul, do you mind doing that?
That would be G one, et cetera? Ah, thank you.
Can read? Record?
Eleven Long Hill Road. Okay, sheet one, drawing G dash one, mark as exhibit A. Sheet two, drawing C dash one, exhibit B. Sheet three, drawing C dash two, exhibit C. Sheet four, drawing C dash three, exhibit D. Sheet five, drawing C dash four, exhibit E. No sheet six, just so you know. Sheet seven, drawing D dash one, exhibit F. Sheet eight, drawing D dash two, exhibit G. Sheet nine, drawing M dash one, exhibit H. Plan of land, exhibit I. That plan of land is signed by planning board two twenty-six seventy-nine.
Is that everything?
Yep.
Okay, um, I'm sure we'll have some questions from the board, but before we do, is there any audience member that wants to? You said, no? No set? Questions at the time? Uh, we'll continue and if you do, uh, you know, raise your hand and I can acknowledge you later too if that comes to that, okay? So, all right, we're back to, I'd say, questions from the board, so if anybody has anything they wanna.
Did you say the access road exists or, or it's being built? My.
So the, the access road that I was referring to is something, if you were to drive up and look at the site, there is an access road that leads into the back area of this land.
Okay.
This is, it's, it's not our access road and, and what's, what's already built back there is not owned by the water department.
Oh, I understand.
So if you were to go up there and you've had any, any sort of site visit, I didn't want it to be misrepresented that the road already exists.
Okay, so is this the new one? The new, the new road that would be built?
Could be a road on there.
This one?
Yes. It, that's the lot itself. The road would be contained within the lot.
I see.
So if you're looking on the drawing that you're looking at right now.
Which drawing shows that?
It'll be built and I would say.
Yeah, so on the drawing you're looking at, which is C two, on the, on the far left side of that drawing, there's a grayed-out area that you're pointing to now.
The gravel drive.
That exists already. It's owned by Crown Atlantic, I think, is the company.
And you can't use it.
And we can't, it's not our land.
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct.
So you're building one.
So.
There's a little one smack probably in the middle here.
Got it.
Correct.
Okay.
And then lead to the tank.
Correct.
Can you talk a little bit about the regular maintenance traffic that's required to run, run operations and all that, so?
How much will be visited?
I mean.
Obviously after this is built, uh.
I think the, the, the tank itself generally, the, the tank itself generally is a, a passive object. I mean, it, it basically stores water when, when we make more than people use and the water leaves there in the reverse. Um, you don't have to go up and turn it on or, or, or operate it. I mean, we, we will go up and periodically check it. I think right now, we have like a once a month sort of wellness check on the storage tanks that we have in the other locations, so it's likely that that would be the case.
Somebody getting out of a pickup truck and doing an inspection and then moving on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think, the intention is not to be there on a daily basis. Um, there may be some storage there that, you know, we have to go up and pick something up that we're gonna be using or whatever, but it's not like there's gonna be offices there, there's no bathrooms, there's no showers, there's no locker rooms, changing rooms. There's, there's nothing in the way of, of a physical plant, if you will.
I assume there's pumps? No, no pumps on.
No, it's all gravity storage.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, so there's no pumps, there's nothing to turn on and off. It just holds water and comes in and out as it pleases, depending on usage in town.
Right.
Yeah.
Again, it's about, it's about as passive as you're gonna get.
From the plant.
Right.
Yeah, which, all, all that's.
Like a, like a Brita thing almost.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
As soon as it's leveled.
That's a perfect analogy.
Um, there's no trucks that need to go in there and fill, for example, is, is there a fire department, uh, fills?
No, no.
Site there or anything like that?
No.
No.
No, we, we have them every five hundred feet.
Neighbors.
They're hydrants.
And how long will construction take?
I'm sorry.
How long will construction take?
Um, I think right now it's envisioned as two hundred and seventy days, but there's, um, I don't, I'm.
Six months active, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a relatively quick process once everything, you know. The whole project is, you know, there's some engineering and a value in, in review of things at, at the front end of the process or whatever. But from the time the contractor shows up, you know, that's a, it's a much smaller duration.
Hours?
Sorry?
Construction, the hours, will, typical construction or?
Yeah.
Close.
I mean, I, I don't think we've really talked about minimizing that. I think, I mean, generally, construction is a seven to three-thirty operation. This might be more like seven to five o'clock. You know, I guess it depends on daylight savings and what phase they might be in, but I think, um, the one thing to keep in mind is, is that every type of construction is unique. So it's not like, uh, you know, the whistle blows and it's quit in time. You know, if they're in the middle of picking up something or stabilizing something or, or attaching something or whatever, or offloading something that came from a long ways away, then there will be, there will be those times when maybe a little bit longer duration, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna misrepresent anything.
Well, you'll have to comply with whatever.
Yeah, we.
Noise ordinances.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can do our best to manage that, but it's, it's not gonna, there's not gonna be things being done after dark, because obviously you can't work in the dark.
Well, and too early, so Monday through Friday, I'm assuming, no Saturday?
Yeah.
What is the rough construction schedule timeframe?
Project schedule, if you were gonna start construction, is this a three-month project, a twelve-month project?
Yeah, so we have given them the option, um, to try to reduce the burden on the ratepayers. We've given them the option to either start this fall or start in the spring, depending on how it best fits the contractor's schedule, 'cause, 'cause we can wait. We're in a position that we can, you know, not have to immediately start and get this thing in and done before the snow flies. So, uh, having that flexibility, I'm not sure exactly when it's gonna start, but if you assume that it starts, uh, if they choose the spring, um, then they'll be out there as soon as the frost gets out of the ground, call it mid-April, and it's about a six-month process. Uh, certainly not more than nine, so they'd be done before the, the new year. If they started in the fall, I would assume that they would probably get the concrete base in, but not do the, the steel bowl until the following year. Would be my assumption, uh, because you'd have that winter shutdown in between.
Um, can you tell me when in nineteen seventy-seven was a, a conforming lot then? Do you know or?
Well, here's the rub.
Did the zoning change? That's what I'm curious.
So there were, there were zoning changes through, through the years. Um, uh, but when, in order for it to be an A and R lot, presumably it was conforming at that time to whatever the dimensional requirements were. It's originally was in a, a CC district. Um, and the, um, that district was at least going through your, the history of your zoning bylaw. That was created in nineteen sixty-nine. Um, it, the IB district was created in nineteen fifty-eight and the site was changed from the CC to the IB in nineteen eighty-four. I, we don't know how to find out what the various dimensional requirements were.
At that time.
At those individual, for those districts and at, at that, those individual points in time when there were changes in it. Um, but as I mentioned, you know, presumably, uh, the lot was in compliance as of nineteen seventy-nine and some subsequent change must have thrown it out.
Okay. Les, you look like you have information.
I think it was a non-conforming lot back there. It's two hundred feet of frontage and eighty thousand square feet. But I heard discussing this with Deidre. I think when the planning board signed the plan in nineteen seventy-seven.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
It was ten meaning seventy-seven.
I, I think, it doesn't, usually an A and R plan says, whether it's a buildable lot or a parcel, I think they approved it as a parcel. And I think the understanding then is that you didn't really need a buildable lot for utility. You just needed a buildable lot for a house or a structure. Zoning in general, a lot of towns and cities, that, that's the case. It turns out Georgetown zoning does say a use needs a buildable lot. I don't think that was recognized. That, that's a guess, but I don't, I don't think the town thought they needed a buildable lot for a water facility. I think they just think they need it for a house or a building.
And there's, you can't find any like bylaw that stated that or anything?
Um, I've got the old books. I've got the books from the sixties. I'm very sure CC was two hundred feet of frontage, eighty thousand square feet.
Can you talk about what's there now? You have an existing use, right?
Yeah, we have a, we have a booster pump station, um, that was actually constructed as part of the mitigation for ZBA approval of the MERA apartments that were done as a forty-B. So.
Yeah, so we have a piece of water infrastructure that's currently on, on the parcel. It's some underground pumps that make sure that people on top of the hill have adequate water pressure.
Oh, okay, got it.
And it, and it's actually.
Yeah.
And it's actually part, it's actually built on a loop, a piping loop that was constructed specifically to facilitate meeting up with a new water storage tank. The, the piping that goes to the tank was actually built as part of that. And so that, that, those, that pipe loop is already built on the site, as is the booster station. Um, I think the, sort of the shortsightedness at the time was, instead of contributing the cost of the booster station towards the construction of the tank and then moving forward with the tank for the benefit of a whole town, the shortsightedness was to only provide some sure, uh, some, some localized benefit to the people at the top of Long Hill, which.
Well, it was certainly cheaper.
It, it definitely was cheaper, yeah.
And, and that would, uh, no longer be needed, I assume, with the tank there.
That is correct.
Go away.
Correct.
So with the building of the new infrastructure, we'll no longer need the existing infrastructure.
But those pumps are there now and they were built, so the municipal use is already in place.
Correct.
And has been since, what, seventy?
The booster, the boost is, the booster station was built in two thousand and four, but the pipe loop was built concurrent with the neighborhood. Again, because it was. Yeah, I think that goes to like eighty-four or eighty-five, again, because it was supposed to be all part of the, kind of the step-by-step process.
So all the, the piping to get the water to the tank is already there?
Correct.
Yeah.
So you're not gonna be digging up streets and stuff?
Correct.
Do you wanna speak in the audience? I feel like, no, you're just listening?
Most of this I already know.
Okay, I just wanna give you the opportunity.
I won't see my backyard.
Okay.
So I already knew that.
Can you tell me who you, where, I just, I'm curious where you live on that?
Along View.
Which, what's your last name?
O'Grinn.
Five, five, right?
Oh, okay, right above it.
I think it's five, are you at five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifteen, fifty-one out.
So the abrevieties might be for your benefit?
I don't think so. I think those will be here.
No, it's really gonna be a hundred and twenty feet. I can't see the towers either. And it's exactly what you're talking about, it's the line of sight.
Okay.
It would be the first house on the right.
Yeah, so you're a couple removed, I guess, from where it will be.
Yeah, the first house on the right would be the one that would be staring right at it.
Are the abrevieties, I think, are abutting, it's one long view?
Yep.
One long view, right, yeah, correct.
He's right, right here.
Yeah, I got it.
He's right here.
So.
I'm two, three locked down.
I'm, um, so this is the existing house.
So if, if I'm.
He's right here.
That's the second house.
O'Grinn. Yeah, okay, you got it.
Again, as I'm saying, the one tower is here.
Thank you.
This is so, and it's shorter.
Give these guys a second.
Yeah, take your time. All right, so.
Les, can I ask you a question? The CC lot that was there years ago, if nothing had changed in that lot was there, these guys would not need special.
Right, it'd probably be grandfathered, right.
And there's a municipal use on the lot already.
CC was the zoning.
That'd be, make our life easier if it was. It's only residential and you have to build within, I think, five years.
Well, there's a.
Eventually it runs out for everybody.
But there's something with an A and R though, I think that you can, it carries, no?
No, it's, and you'd have to build within five years and it's only for residential.
And if the town decided to sell that lot, they'd have to do an affordable unit, to my understanding.
Well, it's not really buildable, so.
Yeah, it's not a buildable site.
Right, but I'm just saying.
Keeping in mind that the only reason this lot was bought was to build this water tank.
And created.
Not arguing that at all.
Yeah, no, I'm, no, I'm saying.
Looked up and down to try and see if there was a way to fit it within.
I'm just trying to connect the dots.
It's chapter forty-eight, section six, the grandfathering provisions and it couldn't, there was, the precedent was.
Yeah, we're trying to give a break to the people that were thinking that back then, 'cause I think that was.
While it's not grandfathered, I like to use common sense. In nineteen seventy-nine, this thing was by all intents and purposes allowed.
Sure.
And then we evolved, if you will, on our zoning and it became maybe with the zoning approval. And also couple that with the fact that you guys are already using it for purposes similar to what you wanna do now, only you're trying to improve the water flow for the people on that side of town.
For the whole town.
The whole town, but specifically that side, it's really gonna be beneficial for that.
Sure.
And then, you know, the lot's not buildable. Um, there's cell towers up there already that are much bigger. So I just kinda, when I'm gonna cast a vote, so you know, I wanna have all the factual data I can to use what we are supposed to use as our guidelines and say, well, if I'm going to make an exception and cast my vote in favor, you know, does everything line up for that? And that's kinda why I'm kinda proud a little bit, so.
Sure.
Um, one of the questions I had that I didn't quite get to when you were going over the system, Lou, is can you talk a little bit about the benefits of a, of a balanced system? The, the, the takeaway I have is that by storing water closer to where it's being locally distributed, that essentially can improve the water quality throughout the entire system as opposed to holding water a long distance from one place. Is that?
I think what you, what you're referring to, I think, is, is sort of water age.
Never quite got the connection to kinda what Dave was talking about. I wanna hear a little bit more about the, the benefits of a balanced system for the town as far as the, the balance of the storage.
Jeff, Jeff could probably give you a, a better answer to that.
The, the primary benefit really is the, the stabilization of the, the pressures and your flows, your, your fire flows in particular. Like for instance, when we lost one of those buildings, what, thirteen years ago now, if we had had that tank there, it would've made an absolute world of difference, 'cause the water was gonna be right above most flammable objects we have in town. Huge, huge benefit for fire flow on that side of town. Um, so you have the water that's closer to you, which means that it's not, as, as the water tries to move along. So you have the water that's closer to you, which means that it's not, as, as the water tries to move along the pipe, there's something called head loss that takes away some pressure. So it gets less and less pressurized as it goes. So to be able to have that water closer to your home, it makes it much more stable. The, the water quality component comes in, in that now the water is arriving at that tank with a higher chlorine residual, which means that it's, it's, um, it's being treated and held better for layman's term. Um, and then we're able to have a long, a shorter stretch from that tank into the homes, you know, particularly in that northeast corner of town. So because of that, it's going to be improving the overall water quality as well.
And you'll also be able to store more water, I assume. Well, again, take the tank offline, so.
We're losing the other ones, the overall, we have an appropriate amount of storage in town, but it's not going to be changing dramatically what the actual number of gallons that we have.
So you don't, you don't increase your, your storage capacity?
You don't really, you don't want too much anymore because of the water quality problems?
It's going to sit there and not get used.
Yeah.
Yeah, stagnant water, bad water. With the population of the town.
Yeah.
I didn't know if there are any efficiency, uh, you know, advantages to the treatment plan because now you can treat, you know, more water while you have it or something like that, but, uh, okay. Good enough.
If the zoning board decided to deny this, wouldn't the town just sue somebody or sue themselves and just do it anyways?
Probably.
I don't understand really ultimately what we're doing. I just, I, I've listened and it all is, it makes perfect sense and clearly.
Well, we could tell them that they just have to rebuild and then fall pay it, right? I mean, that would be an option.
Well, it's not going to give, it's not going to give the other side of town sufficient coverage the way.
I agree, but we could deny it and then that would be.
Oh, absolutely. And then they would say that they could prove that it should be on Long Hill and it's just progress. It's a growing town. This is, this is what we end up with.
Yep, when you build subdivisions, you need water.
I don't know if this means anything, but I'll, I'll, I'll point it out. The entrance to this site, there's a sign that says that there's going to be a water tank here in the future. I think it says future home of Georgetown Water Tank. And I think that signs, we moved to town and, I live in town, we moved to town in nineteen ninety five. We were starting to look for houses, I think, in nineteen ninety one, and that sign was there in ninety one. It said, there's a newer sign there now because that one looked like it was falling down. So it had been there a while. I think what, what I'm trying to point out is, is that anybody who owns a house up there has been driving by a sign, was driving by a sign before they bought a land, house up there or built a house up there that said there would be a water tank. So again, not to beat it to death, but the intention was to purchase it and always was to build something there. I just think we waited way too long to do it. The benefit of waiting is that we, as Jeff had pointed out, we, we sort of maximize the value of our infrastructure as long as we can. The problem is, is if we maximize it much longer, there's always a chance that something could go wrong with it. And putting a Band-Aid on it is money that we'd be, we would be spending that we really don't get any benefit for because we're still moving forward in this other, in the location.
The water quality issue in Georgetown's been a problem for quite a while and they, and we've known for at least five years that the treatment wasn't getting as far as it needed to with the chlorine and everything. I mean, this is.
Yeah.
The, you know.
Especially on the other corner.
I will say that we've, we've made some strides to help that process along.
I'm sure, yeah.
But I think, you know, as I said before, short, medium and long term, we've done all the short-term things we can do. So it's hard to imagine the water quality being able to get a whole lot better without going to some next steps. And if we're following a logical plan, which is what we paid and to have developed, this tank is that next logical step. And again, that's why, that's why we're here.
And, and something else just to mention too, is Mr. O'Grinn's the only one here. And I'm not, I'm not going to put you on the spot in whether you're for or against it, but he's the only one here of the abutters as well. So if somebody, if there were a bunch of people against it, I would have expected them to be here.
I actually took, I actually took the, sort of the proactive stance to, to contact the five closest people to the site on that side of the road. I spoke to four of the five who basically said, we understand it was going to be here. Can you tell us a little bit about it? They had some questions. I spent fifteen, twenty minutes with each person. And I think that, that generally satisfied their questions. We did not hear back from the fifth person and, and so.
Did you talk to the one that's directly about her?
Directly about it. I made, I made two attempts to contact them and they did not contact me back. So I left messages on their, on their voicemail and then I did not hear back.
And the tank that you're taking offline, are, are you removing it? You'll remove it on ball bait?
Yes.
It's coming down one way or the other.
Okay.
Gravity of itself or by nature. So I think what I'd like to do is move, circle back, I think, maybe to Deidre if you could help us out.
Sure.
You've got a, um, bulk of the application talks about the bylaw options for, for whether this, what this would actually require from this board via a special permit, potentially a variance. And I think there's really three different avenues to take. So do you mind, now that we've kind of got an idea of what's going on here, circling back to where we started and say, you know, just get an overview from your, your perspective, because I have some thoughts too, and Les, I know he's been working along on this as well and you may, may have some comments.
Right, right. So it, it, building on, on the, um, on the building inspector's letter of March twenty eighth, we looked at the three potential avenues for relief from the dimensional requirements for this lot. And the, the first one that we looked at is a special permit under, it's section one sixty five dash ninety four. And this is used for pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses. And they can be extended or altered if the Z B A finds that the change, extension or alteration will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use and structure to the, to the neighborhood. And so here, in order to fit this project under that section, the Z B A would have to find that the water tank that's being proposed is actually an extension or alter, alteration of the booster, um, station that's there right now. And, uh.
Not to interrupt, but keeping in mind the use itself is not what's in question here.
No, the, the use is permitted as of right as a municipal utility use. So that's, that's not the question. It's, it's the, the lot itself is non-conforming and then presumably to the extent that it's not a buildable lot, then the booster station that's existing there also is not conforming.
The non-conformities being specifically the frontage and the, and the, and the width of the lot.
Width and the overall lot size. Yeah, it's all of those, all short.
Which hasn't changed since nineteen seventy.
No.
Whenever it was gone, sorry.
To me, the extension or alteration is, I, I'm not at all suggesting that I wouldn't vote, but for me, it wouldn't be this one because I do think the tank is more detrimental than the booster station that's there today. So for me, this one wouldn't be my choice for the reason for.
So if I, if, if you could just indulge me, if it's okay to go through
Yes, great.
specific criteria for a special permit in this circumstance. The special permit could be granted by the Z B A if it finds that, um, the, the, um, the, the the structure that is, is to be constructed there is essential to the public convenience or welfare. It won't overload, um, public water or other municipal systems. It won't impair, um, the integrity or character of the, um, the, the zoning district in which it's located, which is an I B district or the adjoining districts. And it won't cause an excess of a particular use that would be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. So when you apply those state, those specific standards of review to this, and, and we put this in, in our, in that probably too long-winded letter. You know, that, that, the, the tank is essential, um, for public convenience and welfare. It's needed for, um, storage pressure and fire flow rates. And the tank isn't going to overload any municipal system. It's actually, it's an improvement to a municipal system. We're going obviously to take the view that it's not impairing the integrity of the I B district nor the neighboring R B district when you consider that the adjacent site contains two, um, rather very tall existing cell towers. And that, um, it's our contention that the, the existing tree line is going to shield the majority of the views of the tank. And currently, I mean, I, I don't, we don't believe you can find that there is currently an excess of tank usage in this neighborhood. There's nothing there except for the booster station. So that's, this is, again, it's obviously that everybody on the.
Much to your chagrin.
Z B A needs to be comfortable with it, but that's one way to approach the problem.
How come we don't know about those tanks?
Right. There's, obviously there's two other, I don't know if your question's about that one or you want to move on to the two other ways to kind of slice this problem.
Why don't we hear them? I, I guess, um, I ultimately, I think your intention is whatever we decide it's got to be defendable again, correct? So that if someone appeals this, it's.
That's always the case. I think in this, this is a unique case in that we have a municipal, well, there, no cases are identical. This, this one has a lot of unique circumstances around it. And as long as I've been around this board, we've actually never issued a special permit under one sixty five ten, which is I think the next section you're going to touch on, which I think alleviates some of the hurdles that might cause some issues with, with some of the things that some of the members have talked about. So if everybody's okay with it, moving on.
So there goes.
Absolutely, yeah.
Pre-existing non-conforming structures and uses.
So you have.
Favorite is, is option B, but let's, let's hear you out, Deidre, and then we'll, we'll talk about it further.
So this, I, I assume we were talking about the same one. This, the, the next avenue of relief is, is a special permit which basically amounts to a waiver of minimum lot requirements via special permit. The, the language is interesting. It says, where appropriate to the use sought on a lot in existence when the commercial or industrial district was created in connection with new construction or change of use. So, uh, the use has been continuous, so we would be looking at, uh, new construction in this instance. So you would be treating the tank as a new construction rather than an extension of the booster station using this provision. What I'm not clear on, because I was hoping you would say, we've done this before, so we is whether or not the minimum, that phrase, the minimum lot or yard requirements, whether that encompasses the, um, frontage issue. And I don't know if the drafters intended. So my concern with proceeding on that provision is that if it doesn't, if somebody can make an argument that because frontage wasn't called out, we're still not in compliance with dimensional requirements, then you're sort of led back to having to go the variance route to solve the, the problem that there is insufficient frontage. So, um, if frontage is covered, then I, I think, you know, you have to start looking at what, what was the history of the dimensional requirements of this lot? And, and we've had, um, building inspectors kindly shared his, his views having access, which we didn't and don't, uh, to, to the older, um, versions of, um, the bylaw. And frankly, we, we don't have enough facts to sort out how this, um, minimum lot requirement waiver, given the language of this provision, which is in section B of, uh, one sixty five, yeah, dash ten. Whether, you know, how, how that is going to work in practical terms here. Because we, I don't, I don't know whether, you know, certain frontage or lot with was in existence at the time that it changed from this designation to the next designation.
What, what confuses me, and I understand your concern on that. But the section of the bylaw specifically gives the board the right to waive minimum yard requirements. It's the whole point of the, of the section.
Right.
So if, if a lot had to have proper minimum setbacks and, and yard requirements to, to call it a lot in order for us to implement this version of the bylaw, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need this section of the bylaw because it would already meet it. I mean, it's.
That's right.
So, you know, I, I understand your concern. I think from where I sit, that's exactly why this is in here. I mean, I understand there's, there could be other circumstances that the writers were contemplating when they put this in here, but I don't know.
Right.
Maybe I could be missing something.
I like it too, and I, I think as, as an attorney, I can certainly, um, you know, I think that the argument that there's literally no point in talking about minimum lot or yard requirements. That frontage has to be included in the definition of lot because otherwise you're left with the incongruous result that you still have a non-buildable lot if you don't also have the power to waive frontage. I just, I'm being lawyerish and nervous about.
Are you suggesting that frontage is not, uh, your, a lot requirement?
No, I think it is.
Yeah.
So I think you have to, I'm, I just was pointing out the worst case scenario that some horrible, crazy attorney could make that. No, lot wasn't specifically called out here. I, I would not make that, but in, in the interest of fully informing the board, you know, I wanted to throw that out there. Now, if we take it for its face value, which is any of those dimensional lot requirements contained in the schedule of intensity of use can be waived pursuant to a special permit because in simple terms, this has always been a site used for water department purposes. It's continuously been used that way when it was in the C C district and now in the industrial or I B district. The, there have been improvements on that property all along. I think you can use.
And there's been a zoning change.
Correct.
And there's been a zoning.
And there's been a zoning change, then you can utilize one sixty five dash ten sub B to, to grant the relief. We still have to meet those conditions for a special permit, which for the reasons I've just previously gone through pertaining to the other non-conforming extension, any special permit has to meet those.
Not, not more detrimental than the existing, there is no existing non-conforming issue here.
So if we think this.
Simply have the right to, to waive these requirements that are causing them the issue on this.
So if we think this approach works and the board thinks this approach works, are we trying to meet, I mean?
Yeah, we're just trying to understand the options and.
Right.
I, I read through this, you know, having, this hasn't come up before because A, it's got to be in the industrial district. It has to be a lot, um, requirement issue and, and it, it, there has to have been a zoning change at some point and those combinations of things have never come up before, so that we're looking at this. But specifically, you know, the bylaw is giving us the opportunity here to say, hey.
Jeff, Jeff's really good about whenever we decide to vote, i- i- if the vote were to go in your favor, that we can stand up to argue our vote and, you know, stand by what we're given as an, a, a a guideline, if you will, just to why you might vote yes or no. And if you do vote yes, we can look somebody in the eye and say, look, this was under this chapter.
It's defensible.
We want to, we want to be able to, we want a solid decision that incorporates all the facts and, and that decision is looking to be defendable. And that's why we ask all these questions about.
Absolutely, because it's in our interest too that it be defendable. It's not in our interest to walk out and say, oh, yay, and then in thirty days have a decision that really could be decimated. So that's, that's not useful. We're, I think, we, we, we feel that way too. And I think, you know, this, this is, uh, the, the use is here and they, they, it's been in, in use for this continuously. So, eh, the use was in existence when it became both when it was originally designated as a commercial lot and later as an industrial.
And we can also impose conditions if necessary.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the, the, the waiver can be specific only obviously to this project. And unlike, um, you know, variance, it's not going to sort of run in perpetuity with the land. It's just for this particular structure and project and use. So that's, that's option door number two.
Yeah.
You look like you need to waive that.
Three, but I put that one and two there in case you couldn't decide on one or two. Number three is, I think, an easy callback.
Yeah.
But I think those are very.
Number three is obviously a, a straight-up variance that has got some extra hurdles and all that. We could, if people aren't comfortable looking at this section of the bylaw and understanding what it means and the authority that it grants us, there could be some debate there for sure. Then the, the board could find to, uh, you know, that a, that a variance is required here and we'd have to meet the conditions for variance, which, you know, they could, they could probably do.
They could pretty much, that's the only place in the whole town they could put this thing. It's up on a hill and due to the topography or whatever.
The big hurdle is the soil condition, shape, topography.
Sounds like it has to be right exactly where it is.
My biggest thing in forty years, it went from perfectly fine without permit, without anything or without, you know what I mean? To we've evolved into people that overcomplicate. We've evolved into people that overcomplicate things by nature.
Thank you. I agree.
It's true. You don't have to like it, you just have to live with it.
Do you guys want to get into the need for a variance, or do you guys want to talk about
I'm happy to talk about
Well, I'll see what the board, I mean, let me, where are we here? We're in, I guess we're still in question from the board because we're still getting some feedback from people here, so.
I myself am comfortable with
When they, quick question, when they rezone that to industrial, where was that delineate, like, did they do that specifically because they were eventually going to build that, or was that just a complete change of that whole area needed to become industrial because of what was happening in the neighborhood?
Yeah, it wasn't that site-specific, it was an overall change. So this wasn't the only lot involved.
Right, so in industrial, obviously, is considerably more lenient to this type of thing.
It was commercial C to begin with. It went from commercial to industrial.
Right, so commercial has its limitations, industrial has even less limitations essentially, correct? I mean, not as far as setbacks and whatnot, noise.
Different uses, but yeah.
Yeah.
You know, just change.
It's a little, yeah.
Good question, I don't know.
Look, if I was living, I don't live over there.
You've been looking at this for three months.
It's a loud type of thing, industrial noise is a different thing here. Commercial's quiet, industrial noise is
Well, it just seems like an odd place to delineate that as industrial. I was wondering where those, where those lines are. I wonder if it goes right on that, and then it cuts back over, like, where is that? Is that on that plan you have?
What's that?
Yeah, well, the smaller plan.
The zone?
Well, that, that worked too.
You can actually see it on the drawing.
Oh, you can?
That's the dash line to the outside of the, of the, of the property line, showing it pink closest.
Can you show me where that is? The
Is that where you need to fold the copies?
So that, that's industrial on the left, residential on the right?
That's correct.
And that was commercial before?
That's right.
Well, whatever, yeah.
I think the, I think the line was, the line is like an offset 1650 feet
1650 feet was set a line of I-95.
Of Route 95.
Oh, okay, I understand.
So it wasn't parcel-specific, it was sort of that whole corridor.
And they managed to catch it right on the edge of that property line. That's pretty good. That might have something to do with how they decided 1627 feet, 17 inches, it's right on that property line.
I'd like to enter this for the record. I drew that in off the
Look at that, oh, yeah.
Tax maps.
Yeah, they do.
That's the dimensions from the legal description.
They catch it right, yeah, there it is, right there.
I think it was meant to coincide with that.
What is, what is that sheet?
Uh. My point being is it, again, they were planning on something like this, but clearly it does keep going all the way down, so it's not quite as random of a delineation as I thought it might be to capture that, to make sure that stayed in industrial.
Just wondering. Jeff wants to look at that.
We got a little bit of sidebar going.
Submitted that, just if you want to look at that, my map printout. Oh, it's fine, I think we're sectioned.
Do we have to choose this and this? This or this, or this, right?
This one is like just straight up gangster, giving them the variance. This is the one that's
It's all about elevation, right? That's how they came up with this.
That's where pressure comes from.
Yeah, I mean, they knew over on that side, and they said, "Where on this other side of town where we need it, where are we going to nail that? It's right there, it's not up here or down there."
And that would cover everything, right?
And that's very typical, towns have those subdivisions, they'll carve out that top lot, keep it for municipal purposes.
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep.
A hundred percent.
We're trying, trying to multitask, but
Let's just hand it that, my map, it's a mind map printout.
Oh, so the one, the 1650 is the
I drew that in off the legal description from the zoning change.
That was that, yeah, okay. And it falls, I wasn't listening, but it falls the highway right away or something?
Set a line of I-95.
Yeah. Which is why you've got a lot of lots split with two different zones, right? Because it just goes
It would kind of coincide with that lot of language.
Yeah, it misses, and then there's some further down that get cut in half.
There's always
Some of these residential ones, houses.
Yeah, yeah. Lot's okay, but it's split zoning in different lots.
Okay.
All right.
Sure. Just make sure I can have that, my map.
Patty needs it though.
Okay.
So, the audience, any other comments at this point? You'd like to contribute? Sure. You're welcome if you choose. And you guys have anything, anything else you want to cover at this point as far as, we got a pretty good summary, we've asked a million questions. So I think we'll move to board discussion, and if there's any, anything that comes up, you know, we're certainly going to ask you guys as needed. So my opinion as chair, I'll just play it out there, I spent a decent amount of time with Les on this because we weren't sure how to handle the application from the get-go, and a lot of people coming in not knowing what they're applying for, so, you know, we had a couple of conversations with Lou, and I was talking with Les about what he was figuring out, what needed to happen here. Ultimately, you know, there are some avenues here, and I think that one section, that section 165-10, in my opinion, I think it could easily be a special permit, I think the bylaw gives a specific right to do it, and that's, that's the direction that I think we should go, but if you guys have any issues with that or thoughts, by all means, let's discuss it. What that requires is a couple of findings. I think that we need to find that, I've kind of been chatting with Gina here for a minute, we jotted down a couple of things, and maybe Gina would move ahead with that in a second, but we've got to make a couple of findings, and then based on those findings, vote on whether or not a special permit would be granted in this case. So do you guys want to talk about any of that at all at this point, or heard everything you need to hear?
I'm good.
I'm all set, I'm comfortable with what we're doing, yeah.
That's my version of a straw poll before we actually move ahead and vote, because if anybody's got consternation about things, I like to kind of know about it ahead of time, but not that that binds anybody to what we're about to look at. Let's talk a little bit about the conditions, sorry.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Maybe you're going to go there, okay.
Because it will require site plan approval, so as far as screening, that, you know, that may totally change. Lighting, what else do they, they're going to go?
Parking, access, the road, you know, you know.
Hours.
Yeah, operating hours.
Construction hours you're worried about.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, just because it isn't close to a neighborhood, I'm a little concerned about construction hours, but I'm not the one who tells you what to do, so the site plan will. But I think be cognizant of the neighbors, I think during the construction is the one thing that I would ask. But it wouldn't be a condition, because it's, the condition is it's site plan approval.
Well, we can note that it requires it, I think it's self-evident in any way. Actually, have you guys already gone? You've already started that process, or no?
We are, we're actually on their agenda for May 10th.
Okay, so you've put an application before then?
It's just a couple of weeks. It came in after the agenda was posted.
We can, I mean, we can leave it in just as a note for the record that we, you know, we recognize that.
Right.
Whether or not they're going to do it, they're going to do it anyway. And we've read a bunch of plans in the record, that's what we've been reviewing tonight, we've been looking at them. Construction would be per the plan submitted, as long as there's no material changes, but do you guys foresee any major changes to the design so far?
I mean, they may, they may want to expand the screening a little bit more, but I think um
Tank's not going to be 20 feet higher.
Tanks not going to change, yeah.
These are stamped 100% plans that you see before you, these are the ones that have already been approved by Mass D U P as well. This is what we're doing.
We're not looking at any material changes, anything else.
So really, it would just be screening, plantings, any type of
Yeah, the only lighting that's proposed is, again, the light over the door, and it's about as minimal as you can do, and that's on the opposite side of the tank from the houses. So, I mean, I think it's, anything less would be nothing. It would be flashlights, so.
Right, which isn't practical either.
Yeah.
iPhones.
Exactly.
Do they make flashlights still?
Cool little tool.
All right, Sharon, anything else?
Any other concerns about the long-term? You good?
Yeah. The tank lasts for what?
Ideally?
Yeah.
100 years.
I'm good.
What about your kids' kids?
Listen.
If they can't figure it out.
Be lucky if they come see me at the
We'll be on Mars by then.
The good news is, is the water pressure will be the exact same then, isn't it now?
Yeah, that's right.
Water will still flow downhill.
Yeah. Unless we go to a zero-gravity state, then
Are you done?
Moving on, yeah.
All right, Gina, take it away.
All right, I move that the board find that lot 49A, Sessors Map 15, in the IB district, known as 11 Long Hill Road, was in existence and used for water department facilities when the industrial district was created.
Let's move, let's move on that. That's one of the requirements of 165-10.
So moved.
On second.
Second.
All those, yeah.
Gina made the motion.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I forgot, you're the chairman now.
Motion carries. Move on.
I further move that the board find that the proposed new construction and expansion of the water department facility, the water depart, I can't read your writing, the water department facilities use is essential and desirable to the public convenience or welfare. The requested use will not overload any public water or other municipal system so as to unduly subject any area to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. The requested use will not cause an excess of that particular use, which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood.
So moved. Any decision, or, I'm sorry, second?
Second.
Dave, you want a second? She's making the motion, you want a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, that finding carries.
Based on the evidence presented at this hearing and the finding made by the board and per section 165-10 of the zoning bylaw, I move that the board grant a special permit to the Town of Georgetown Water Department for the construction of a municipal water storage tank and waive minimum lot size and minimum frontage requirements with the following conditions. All construction is per plan submitted, and the project requires site plan approval.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Per plan submitted covers the
It's what's stamped in the file.
Right.
And it covers the lot restrictions that we're waiving. Do we need to specifically note those lot restrictions? I think we do.
Please, I was going to ask if you could
I'm going to make a friendly amendment to
A specific, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Here, go right here. Dimensional requirements, 60,000, 450, 80, is that what you Yeah. Right in the legal act, take it from the legal act.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. Yeah. So the pre-existing non-comforming lot dimensional requirements are 60,000, 60,450 square feet, 110.39 feet of frontage, and lot width of 50 feet.
Yeah, I think what we'd say specifically is we'd waive the minimum lot, the lot size and minimum frontage requirements of, including lot area of 60,450 where 8,000 square feet is required, frontage of 110.39 feet where 200 feet is required, and lot width of 50 feet where 150 feet is required. Now, I just read it, it's Sorry, we're trying to I shouldn't put this in there to begin with. I didn't need it from here.
I already did. Didn't I?
Where, you're going to put the requirement, and that's all? I can do that whole sentence.
Hold on. Lot size area. Required frontage. And the lot width. So, from storage tank, and waive minimum lot size area of 60,450 square feet where 80,000 square feet is required, required frontage, I didn't
That's right, it's fine, it's right here.
110.39 feet where 200 feet is required, and lot width of 50 feet where 100 feet is required, with the following conditions.
It's fine. Got it, we good?
Patty will clean it up a little bit.
Patty will.
Yeah, as long as I can read it, you can write it.
All right, so Davey, you seconded that?
Yes, I did.
All right, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, and your special permit is granted.
Regulations may the water flow.
The zoning clerk has 14 days to file a decision, and the appeal of this decision shall be made pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 17. Within 20 days after the date the notice of decision was filed with the town clerk, an applicant may file this decision before the 20 days, but does so at their own risk, and laps a special permit per Mass General Law 40A, Section 9. Did this change, Patty?
Yep.
Special permits granted shall lapse within a specified period of time, not more than three years.
Three years.
Which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referenced in Section 17, if a substantial use thereof is not sooner commenced except for good cause, or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction is not begun by such date except for good cause. And you can figure out what that means, because we always get confused on
Okay. So we have three years. So you've got three years to get rolling on it, but I assume we're going to have a tank before then.
So you can push that separate
Okay.
Very edge.
Very good.
Awesome.
Do I have a motion to, is there anything else you need?
Yep.
All right. Motion to close it here.
Hello.
Passed by Gina, motion by Dave. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome, appreciate all your help through this.
Patty. Yes.